The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning, Lincoln County. Today is Thursday, June 9, 2022. Under routine business, can I have a motion to approve today's agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion, hearing none. Clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahrens?
Yes. Consent agenda items. Anybody wish to pull anything out of the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahrens?
Yes. Thank you. Now is the time and place for public comment. Does anybody in the public wish to address the commission? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to commissioner reports. Commissioners, does anybody wish to address the commission?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to commend, first of all, the communities of Hudson and Lennox. I did attend memorial services for, that they had on May 30th. And again, I appreciate their efforts and the fine job that they do recognizing those that are serving now, those that have served, those that, of course, have fallen in the line of duty. And they do a nice job with their programs each particular year. Also, on May 31st, we did have a meeting that Terry Floyd organized out at the highway shop. Commissioner Schmidt and I both attended in regard to some of the concerns that the Hudson community had with the Department of Transportation in regard to Highway 46. And representatives from the DOT were there. And along with, again, our legislative team, which was much appreciated, which was representatives of legislative people Anderson, Bowlin, Vassgar, Jensen. And it was good to hear a particular plan that was being thought out and being used. And some of this might have to be reflected in our budget this year to maintain, again, access for farmers for their trucks to get to that ethanol plant at Hudson. So we're encouraged, we're hoping that we have a plan in place that will work for, not only for the DOT, but also possibly for Lincoln County. So those are two things that, again, I'd like to emphasize the importance of. And again, thanks to Terry Floyd for organizing that meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I also had the privilege of speaking at the T memorial service. They dedicated their memorial to the veterans. It was always a moving experience to hear from some of our veterans and to the experiences that they've had. You know, unfortunately, our veterans from World War II are leaving, are passing on to astronomical numbers. And now we have the Korean veterans and the younger vets as well. So it was a very, they're going to have a beautiful memorial depicting branches of the service and also individuals that have passed. And if anyone is so inclined, you can always buy a brick and remember a relative or a friend. So again, those kinds of services always remind us of the privilege that we have to vote. So, and I'd like to also extend to the voters in District 5, a huge thank you for their continued support following the election.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I had the opportunity to attend the Memorial Day service in Harrisburg, and that was sponsored by Harrisburg Legion Post 45, which I'm a member. And it was well attended, even though we had a little bit of rain, we were touch and go there. They had to move the ceremony inside and away from the cemetery where they normally handle it. But it was well attended, and the good thing about it is there were a lot of young children there. So parents had the opportunity to pass on to their kids the importance of Memorial Day, but more importantly, to be able to share with them the sacrifices of, that service members have made in defense of democracy. And for the people of Lincoln County and the state of South Dakota, we just had an excellent representation of how democracy works and why it's so important and why we need to defend it. We had good elections, and democracy is not a spectator sport. You have to show up if you want to be heard. And we had good voter turnout. And I'm glad that the real winners here are the citizens because they had the opportunity, unlike so many other places in the world, to decide and determine for themselves how their government is going to represent them. Anybody else?
Sheri, I have a question. What was the voter turnout? What percentage did we have?
I think we were close to 30%.
Is that average, above average?
I think it's a little higher than average.
Good, good.
Okay, we'll move on to regular business. Items number 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 are going to be presented by Carla Gosin. Carla, will you step up and start this discussion for us?
Good morning. Carla Gosin, Director of Equalization. Our first item is an abatement. Carryover from the May 24th meeting. The initial abatement was denied by the Director of Equalization, or the recommendation is to deny it. The assessment year is, for this particular applicant, is from November 1, 2019 through October 31, 2020. This particular applicant did not qualify for the veteran's exemption until after the assessment date. I referred back to South Dakota Codified Law on the veteran's exemption, which is Some of the eligibility requirements are set forth within that law, references back to the owner occupied law, which is set forth in 10-13-40, which then again represents references back to the November 1 assessment date, which in our briefing agenda, it does state South Dakota Codified Law 10-6-2. That's an old number. It's actually 10-6-105. So the assessor's recommendation for this particular applicant for the veteran's exemption is to deny the abatement request.
Carla?
In the amount of $2,609.77.
Carla, is this the one that Ethan brought in front of us, and we had some discussion over the dates?
That is correct.
Yeah, so for members of the commission, I did go back to speak after the meeting, spoke with Ethan. Ethan did discuss with me that he didn't have some information at hand when he was making the presentation. I think had we had that information at hand, it would have probably shown that it wasn't something that the commission could do. And unfortunately, we're commanded by the law to just, we just don't have the authority to do certain things. And so even though I think we would like to be able to extend this to this veteran, I did speak with Ethan, and unfortunately, it does look like we can't do it. So, yeah.
I did bring, you know, all the law references if...
Will he qualify next year?
Yes.
So it'll be a one?
His application came in in March of 2022. I brought forth that application to the Board of Equalization to qualify him since he missed the deadline and to have it be retroactive as of the November 1 assessment date, so the appellant didn't have to go through the abatement process. So we just retroactive dated it during Boards of Equalization.
So next year, he will be receiving this?
That is correct.
Good.
Yeah, and I think this is an issue for the state legislature to address. County commission just doesn't make the law with regard to how the abatement process works, although we do have some discretion in other areas. So maybe this is an issue I'll have to talk to my state legislator about.
Carla, would you, or Mr. Chairman, would you mind having the action that had been taken officially read into the minutes again? What action was taken, Carla?
On the 24th, I'm sorry.
The abatement was granted.
The abatement was granted, and it was going to be prorated.
Prorated abatement.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, you're asking us to rescind that action, then?
Yes, asking to rescind and reject.
I'll so move, Madam Chair, or Mr. Chair, if you're looking for a motion.
Got a motion. Do we have a second? Hearing none, the...
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Can you, for, just for, because I think this deserves some further clarification. Joel, can you, when you say we don't have the authority to do that, do you mind just digging a little deep and just say why?
Yeah, I think what he wanted was, Carla, please correct me if I'm wrong, he wanted a retroactive abatement that would have extended beyond the one-year time period. Am I stating that correctly? He wanted to reach back further than what...
His qualifying date was.
Correct. And so what he essentially was saying is, I qualified, so now I want my qualification to be able to extend and reach back further than what the law allows beyond his qualification date. And I think at the time, we had a discussion here of can we retroactively grant an abatement up to the qualification date? But the qualification date went back further than what the statute allows.
That is correct.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. So I would like to be able to grant that. I'd like to do a lot of things. The problem is the law commands otherwise.
I agree with you. Thank you. I think that's a, yeah, I don't think anybody that would have not approved this, but on the other hand, your hands are tied because...
We would have 57 others that we'd have to grant the same type of situation for that would have met the same type of disqualifying requirements.
This is not a one-off situation. This gentleman, I believe, is in a category of others that does deserve to be addressed by our state legislature. And maybe we can work with, maybe we can work with our legislators in order to pass some kind of, some kind of resolution supporting a legislative fix to this, because I know it's going on in other counties as well.
Yep.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahrens?
Yes.
Our second item is an abatement for veteran's exemption as per SDCL 10-4-40. This application met the eligibility, missed the deadline. Therefore, according to abatement rule 10-18-2 in subsection 10, the commission has the authority to abate these type of exemptions. The exemption is in the amount of $2,543.22.
I so move.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahrens?
Yes.
The third item is an abatement for a veteran's exemption in accordance to South Dakota Codified Law 10-4-40. The applicant met the eligibility but missed the deadline for application. Therefore, according to abatement rule 10-18-2 in subsection 10, the commission may abate these types of exemptions. It's in, the exemption amount is in the amount of $2,543.20.
I would so move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahrens?
Yes.
Item number four is an abatement for parcel number 280.98.00.200. It's in the name of the city of Sioux Falls. In accordance to South Dakota Codified Law, in the abatement law in 10-18-1, an exempt applicant, it can be abated by the commission. This particular application is an exempt organization by the Constitution. The city purchased it in 10-26-2021. The abatement is a prorated abatement in the amount of, I don't see that on this. I think you have it in your packets. I don't see it on the briefing form.
It's $88.51.
Thank you for that amount.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahrens?
Yes.
The next abatement on item number five is parcel number 281.84.01.002. It's owned by the city of Sioux Falls. Again, statutory requirement allows the commission to abate any property that is owned by an exempt property and is not taxable. The city of Sioux Falls is exempt by Constitution. It was prorated. City purchased it 10-13-2021. The abatement amount is $17.86.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahrens?
Yes.
Thank you, Carla. Thank you.
The next agenda item is authorize the chair to execute letters of support for South Dakota Highway 46 and Veterans Parkway to United States Department of Transportation. Believe that agenda item was put on the agenda by Commissioner Landine. I'm just going to take a look at this in our packet here for a moment. I would let everybody know this is in your packet, on your screens.
Oh, I got it.
And just for the benefit of the public, who obviously may not have the ability to pull this up, what this would do is, I'll just read the first paragraph. This is coming from the commission, of course. "We strongly support the multimodal project discretionary grant application by the South Dakota DOT for Veterans Parkway from I-29 to Sycamore Avenue. This project advances the national goals of 23 USC 150 and the MPDG program." And just further for the benefit of the public, I believe that this is also the kind of letter that Departments of Transportation are encouraged to collect from municipalities and subordinate units of state government when they put these grants in. Is there any other questions?
You're correct in that. I would so move that we authorize you to sign that particular letter of support.
We've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahrens?
Yes.
Item number seven, Madam Auditor Sheri Lund, Board Discussion Regarding Budget Schedule.
Yep, so it's that time of year, so we would need to figure out what we're going to do. I'd like to do at least a couple work sessions, bring in all the department heads to discuss their budgets with you. I just wanted to see what we think about July, how it's going to go. Do we have the July 15 deadline that we have to worry about? You let me know. What are your thoughts?
July 15 deadline is the deadline for the, if you want to extend it opt-out, is that correct?
That is correct.
How many budget, or, excuse me, how many sessions will it take in order to get through each of the departments?
Well, I kind of like the way we did it last year where we went through the expenditures first, and then we did the payroll afterwards. That gives us an opportunity to focus on what the expenses are. The payroll is kind of a set deal. I think if we were to do, you know, at least one budget session with all the department heads coming in for just their expenditures, it may be good. That way, they all have, you know, an opportunity to discuss each of their budgets, let you know where they're at, why they have their numbers. If we, and we could do that, again, it all depends on if you guys decided you think you might need an opt-out. We'd have to have it decided before July 15. If you don't think that we need an opt-out, then we could do a work session in the week that we don't have the meeting on July 19. We do have to have the budget hearing by, I believe it's the first week of September.
I think this is going to be a budget year of, well, all budget years get tough, but I think we're going to have to discuss a lot of different issues on that. I would start early on this thing, as early as we can. Could they be ready, like on the 28th of this month?
Could what be ready?
I mean, could we have our first budget session that early?
I, whatever you want to do.
You know, I just think we need to start reviewing this because I think there's going to be challenges that we have. There's a lot of demands out there. And if we do ever face an opt-out, we better have justification for that. So I would recommend, I'd like to see our first session like on June 28.
So at the first session, then, do you want just the budgets presented to you? Do you want, because, you know, we...
Do we know the expenditures? Do we, will we know by that time?
Yeah, I'm compiling them right now.
Well, let's go with the expenditures.
Right, but, so you don't want to talk to, you want the department heads come in and talk to you, discuss their expenditures, or you just want, here's what we've got for expenditures per their request?
No, well, you have to hear from department heads.
Okay, so I don't know what the agenda already looks like on the 28th, but then, we can certainly do it. I don't know how long you guys want to be here. Do you want all the department heads at one time on that day?
Can we get it in in one day?
You can do whatever you want to.
Sheri, I don't recall what we did last year. What, do you remember the process?
I do.
That we started with?
I do. We took our off week and we had a work session. Last year, I took anybody that was over 5% and had them come and meet with you. I don't know if that was necessarily the best option because some people felt that their voice didn't get heard. So some commissioners commented that everybody should have had it. The Fang Committee thought that every department head should justify their numbers. I tend to agree with them. You know, over the last two years, we've kind of tried a couple different methods. What do you think has worked better?
So what you're saying is if they just hand in their numbers, that would be sufficient? You think?
No, I don't think that's sufficient at all.
No, what I mean, the off, the off session, I'm starting early here in June. The off day would be the 21st.
Yep.
I think the first thing that needs to happen on the 21st is we need to be presented with, the commission needs to be given the budget book. That's number one.
And that's our, but that's our off week meeting, so...
Well, you can give it to us...
I can give you the budget book next week.
Yeah, you can give it to us even electronically.
Yep.
We don't need to have a meeting in order to, for the commissioners to be given that information, number one. So I think that's where we should start in terms of the process. It's number one, present us with the budget book from each of the department heads' budgets. Then the commissioners can do as they want in the off week, but presumably, they're going to review that that week. And then on the 28th, the department heads can come in here, and we need to have a schedule. And that could be circulated amongst department heads and constitutional officers as they see fit. We schedule times. I think we're going to need sharp pencils this year. And that means this commission's going to have to be giving more of its time to these department heads. And so I don't know, we could schedule 30 minutes apiece or even an hour apiece to discuss their budgets. I don't ever think it's taking an hour in my estimation, but...
I think if we do 30 minutes, that's...
We can start there.
Yeah, yep.
And we can use that as a starting point for each of these folks to come in, and we can start the discussion and dialogue about what the budget needs to look like. I don't think we need, unless other commissioners feel otherwise, I don't think we need to micromanage how the folks are going to come in front of us. But I would like to see we do all the constitutional officers at one time and then do department heads at another time.
In the same day, it doesn't matter?
Yeah, I don't think so. But, you know, other commissioners may feel otherwise, given their experiences.
So if we schedule the, if we schedule like the budget, the beginning of the budget hearings on the 28th, constitutional officers first, then department heads maybe a little bit later, and that gives you guys an opportunity then to take it, digest it, we can continue with the budget hearings. And you want us just to do the expenses first like we did last year, worry about the personnel items about it later?
Well...
I know you have to have it all wrapped up in a basket afterwards, but the department heads can't do anything about their wages.
No, they have certain constraints on them by law that we can't control. But I think anytime you have a discussion about budget, it's like playing Jenga, right? You move one block, it affects another. It puts weight on this block, it removes weight on another block. So I don't, I don't think we should create an artificial constraint or a glass ceiling with regard to the expenditures. I think when we come in, we've got to have a holistic or a global conversation about all of it. So I would shy away from that technique, and when they come in, we've got to talk about all, all costs.
Right, but again, the department heads, they're, they're not in control of what wages happen, so...
I get that part.
Okay.
And we're not asking, you know, we're not saying, hey, you, you need to get control of this particular wage item issue, but it's part and parcel of the conversation, and so I think we need to be prepared to discuss it. And I think more importantly, the public probably wants to hear about it. We're not going to hold them accountable or responsible for something they can't control.
Okay.
But at least when we have a budget discussion, we want them to be able to come in and talk about those issues, because we'd be fooling ourselves to think that those issues don't affect the rest of the budget.
Absolutely, so, but you, I don't have any numbers for wages, so you won't have any wage numbers on the budgets. They have no idea what you guys would set for the wages, so...
Mr. Chair, I, I understand what you're saying, but I like to know what we're, how much, what our expenditures are going to be. I like to compare them with last year, or if you have those, which I'm sure you do. You could compare them over the last two, three, four years, which would give you an idea of how much more this budget is going to have to wrestle with. And yeah, we don't, we haven't decided on wages yet. And I'm not saying that department heads or constitutional officers can't come in and explain everything, but when you buy something, you go out and find out what the cost is. And that's where I get, we got to work from.
Right.
Because the cost is what we're going to work on.
So what do we want to do about it?
We can't necessarily artificially say that we're going to have X amount of revenue. We don't know that.
I think what the, I think the auditor is going to say what I'm about to say. I think what the, I think the auditor is going to say what I'm about to say. Go ahead.
So, I mean, we, you want all the numbers, but I don't have any wage numbers.
I understand.
You can't get the wage, I mean, I plug in there whatever number I want, but it's, there's where your artificial numbers coming from.
Don't we have expenditures minus, if you take the wages aside?
Yeah, and that's how we did it last year.
I just wanna know, those expenditures, I'm not talking wages. I just wanna know what it's going to cost us to run our county government as compared to-
Without the wages?
Yes.
Okay.
And for the past three or four years.
Let's do this, though. Let's at least have that column, or that spreadsheet, excuse me, that shows what the wages are-
Currently?
Currently. Because when you, when a governing body makes decisions as to what the next calendar year or the next budget year is gonna look like, if you just strip out one whole component of the budget, you may say in your mind, well geez, we got a lot of money here to spend.
Yep.
But, so, when you make those determinations, you should at least, the policymakers up here on this dais should at least have that spreadsheet and column in front of them.
And that's why last year, when we did it, we did the three different percentage increases so that you could see the difference.
Yeah, and that, I think that's where I was going, is, you know, that, that's just the auditor putting those numbers out there in order to-
Give a basis.
So the policymakers here can visualize what the constraints are going to be, right? So I think if you did that again, that would be helpful. But I think we do need to have at least current wages, so we know how much money we have available to us and how much we're gonna need, or how much we need to cut.
Well, wages are gonna be a contentious issue because if you look around at the raises that have been granted by businesses across, right, in our own locale. So, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to spend a lot of time talking about that, and I'm sure there will be differences of opinion, a difference of ideas, but wages are gonna be probably the most contentious thing that we deal with on our budget, to be very honest with you.
Well, yeah, I think you'd be sticking your head in the sand if you didn't think that these department heads and constitutional officers are gonna come in with a zero-sum budget this year. But regardless of whether it's contentious or not, I think in terms of putting the information in front of the policymaker, just put the wage information there for this year, so we have a mental impression as to how much we're gonna have available.
So if we-
Well, we also have two other issues. We have two unions to deal with as well. And those negotiations haven't really began yet, so-
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for the- It's never a pleasant situation when it comes to budget time. We've, over the years, looked at it under this type of a philosophy of, what's our cost, what's our revenue? Our revenue doesn't meet our costs, so we're gonna have to cut, cut something. We are a dynamic, is an understatement, county. And I wish we had a full board here today so we could do what I think we need to do. And that is give direction to what our future's going to be. We have roads that are deteriorating. We're not making the improvements to them that we need to do. We are growing out of space exponentially, continuously. We're facing an increasing incarceration budget. We're looking at building a courthouse and/or a public safety building. We are just touching an issue gingerly. I don't think we get to touch this thing gingerly anymore. We have gotta face the hard facts of what's going on in this county. And this board needs to step up and to give the direction to department heads and offices of what we're going to do. And if it's going to do that, we're going to not look at increasing funding, they need to know that so they can properly plan for what the future's gonna be. I'm not saying that we need to opt-out, do anything, but we need to give them a final idea of, not a final, but an idea of what it is that we're going to support that this county's gonna become in the next decade and, or, or longer. Because you don't speak to anybody that's proud of our roads. You don't speak to anybody that's happy with a lot of things that's been going on. And we, I've looked at this budget for a lot of years. There isn't huge fat in it. You can trim here or there, a few dollars, but unfortunately, we're not in a budget where a couple dollars makes a difference. So that's what I, I hope we can give a discussion amongst ourselves and then direct support to our department heads who have to create their budgets this year and in the future. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, getting back, go ahead, Commissioner Schmidt.
Go ahead, one other comment before we, before we just focus on this. Commissioner Poppins, what you just said is absolutely true. However, we sit up here and we have never taken the time to study our future. Most organizations do strategic planning on about every two or three years to determine direction, ideas, philosophy. But we sit here and we haven't ever taken the time to study our future. I think the last one I chaired was years ago, when we determined what we were gonna do, and that's why we built this courthouse. We've had a fam group of business leaders that has given us valuable information. And one of the major recommendations that they made was to take the time to do some strategic planning. And I think there couldn't be a more critical time for us to take advantage of their volunteer effort to do that. And I think the auditor and I have talked about that. So, in addition to our budget, as we sit here and we can pick and choose and do whatever we want, Commissioner Poppins is absolutely right. We have a growing population. We were told by this group that we could be 100,000 people by, you know, 2030. Well, my goodness, we can't sit here and just, our future is not tomorrow, or next week, or the next budget. Our future is budgets beyond this. So I'm asking this commission, and I'll put it on the agenda, to authorize some few thousand dollars to cover the auditor's expenditures and engage with these people that were good enough to volunteer their time to help us look strategically at where we're going and how we're gonna get there. And that may be a coincidental, and we could simultaneously parallel that with the budget process.
Well, I think you bring up a good point, Commissioner Schmidt, because, and I think we need to have certain members of the fan come back in and further clarify and expand on their remarks. You know, there were some people out there in the public who latched on to one of the comments by one of the fan members and grossly and inaccurately stated there was $2 million in the budget that didn't get used for roads. That is not true. There was the, there wasn't even an authorization made to spend that money. That was notional, fictional, made-up money. The person who made that comment on the fan probably wishes they could've came back in here and clarified those remarks as to how the budget works. But, you know, some people just wanna run with one little tidbit or comment and turn that into the gospel. So, I agree with you. We should make time for the fan committee members to come back in here, if they will, if they'll grace us with their time, and, and come back in here and explain themselves. But getting back to the original question, which is not what the philosophy of the budget is, but what the schedule's gonna be. And that is, what I'm hearing so far is we'll have a budget book produced to us on the 21st. We'll have the 28th scheduled for a budget work session. And then, let's also plan on the 5th of, do we have a commission meeting on the 5th of July? Yes, we do. Day after 4th of July. Let, let's also schedule that for a work session as well.
You know, and if you wanted to, we could do like micro work sessions. I guess the biggest thing is gonna have to be if you are going to do anything about an opt-out. We have to have, it has to move a little bit further, or a little faster, if you're going to do an opt-out.
Well, I can tell you where I'm at on an opt-out right now. But, I don't speak for the other commissioners. But if what you're suggesting is in terms of the process, we need to do something other than on a Tuesday, I've got no objection to that.
No, and I, I need to know though collectively about an opt-out. Because you guys have to have a decision made before the 15th. I need to schedule, prepare, and everything else if you're going to do that. We have to have that finalized by the 15th, which is a Friday. So we have till the 12th, if you wanna do it during a regular business meeting. I don't, it's completely up to you, but we, if we have to have that in our mind.
Well, let's do this. So, you know, in the Army, we use this thing called backwards planning, okay? You backwards plan from the date on which something is supposed to be done. If a decision or determination for these folks up here needs to be made by the 15th, the question is, how many meetings do we need to have before the 15th in order to come up with a decision point? So, we need to have the 28th, we need to have the 5th. Are you saying we need more meetings beyond that? And that's fine, I'm just asking.
No, I think we can do it on the 12th.
Okay.
I think if we do all of those, then that gives us four opportunities to meet and discuss it. But at the same time, at what point are you going to, are we going to discuss wages? Because we can discuss everything else until we have a solid number about wages. It means not a lot.
Mr. Chair, do you want the fan to be in conjunction with this, or something outside of this?
We don't have time for the fan to be in conjunction with this, I don't think.
Or is this something we're looking at later this summer? Or what?
Well, I think you could- I don't necessarily know if the fan needs to operate on the same timeline as what the opt-out timeline is. I think the fan comes in fairly early, maybe not right away. But they can come in and they can help set the conditions for any discussions we have before the 15th of September.
You know, we go back to this wages issue, and we can talk about expenditures all day long. We may face a situation where we have to make a choice of whether we're going to pay our staff on a basis of what's going on in our country right now, or right here in this area, versus what we're going to have to cut out of the expenditures. How are you gonna do that? If you got roads or bridges, you gotta close something to pay your staff? I mean, this is going to be a very, very difficult situation to try to come up with a balanced budget on this thing. So, we need as much time as we can as a group to sit here and talk, argue, whatever. I mean, I, I, I just, I just, this isn't a normal budget year in my mind. So, I'm thinking if, let's not cut short on a meeting time just because it's inconvenient or something. Let's spend as much time as we can to air this thing out so we get the proper amount of hearing on all of this. But I really do. I mean, I don't know what you're thinking about for wage increases, but my God, when you look around and you can't find staff and their wage going up there 8%, and their bonuses they're giving people to keep them, their staff here, you know?
Well, let's, let's start with these four-
Right, as much as I wanna engage with Commissioner Schmidt on those comments, I'm gonna refrain at this time. Here's what I do wanna do, though, in terms of the process. Is there any objection here to people wanting to meet on Tuesday, June 30th? Or, excuse me, Thursday, June 30th? Would that work to be able to hold another work session?
Sure.
Well, let's start with these four, first scheduled work sessions. After the 28th, we'll kinda have a better feel.
All right.
How's that?
Okay, so what are our, what are our dates?
21st, 28th, 5th, and 12th.
Yep.
Okay, very well. Okay, any other discussion?
Again, I, I would like to stress, as I have had the opportunity, have taken the opportunity to try to visit with department heads somewhat on an ongoing basis, but specifically with this upcoming budget. Commissioner Schmidt is, is accurate that the wages are substantial impact. What they need is direction as to what, how to develop their budget. Because if, if their status quo is gonna be, we're going to trim the little bit of fat. My idea is if we're trimming, we're not trimming fat anymore, we're trimming meat and/or bone. And I just can't support it anymore, and that's fine. If it, if the board decides not to do it, we can survive, absolutely. But it's, what services, at what cost are we doing this? And there are so many things, including our incarceration expenditure, that we have no control over at all. So, we, you know, this board, I hope, can step up and say, and again, if it's an, or a majority says, yep, we're gonna keep trimming this thing until, till there's literally no bone left, that, that be set. You know, that's the decision of the board. But this board needs to give that direction for those department heads. Cause the highways, we need, we need roads improved, point blank. And we've, that's the department we continuously go to, to trim and trim. And, and then we get accused or complain that we didn't get a project done. Well, that's because of unfortunately circumstances beyond the control of the department to get some projects done because of scheduling or whatever. We need to have enough projects on there so we, we get these roads improved, or at least at a minimum, maintained.
Do we need to schedule, to that end, do we need to schedule more time then for Terry Floyd to come in? And more than just 30 minutes to give a presentation, so we can have time to dialogue and discuss with him then? Should we plan on him coming in for an hour, two hours, where he could give a comprehensive, thorough explanation of all the projects, the cost, et cetera? Should we do that, then?
Anything that we can do to be better prepared to answer the questions and give direction would be appreciated.
Sure, so let's just make some more time available for Terry, as much as he sees fit. Let's put him in a block of time where he's not constrained by someone in front of him, in back of him.
Also, I think what we have to have is Bill, you better give, or Mr. Golden, you better give us an update on courtroom space because we're short, correct? We've leased space from Minnehaw County to, it's a stopgap measure, which we may not have the ability to do. And we're gonna be under court direction to provide that, which we don't have any say-so on at all. So there's another issue that we have to confront.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say that I know that probably Mr. Floyd's focus will be on probably 11 miles specifically after our meeting May 31st in regard to the southern part of the county and the issues with, with, again, the DOT and Highway 46 that Lincoln County, 152 and so on will probably take top priority. And I agree too that some of our roads do need improvement, very much so.
On those notes, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask for executive session under potential contract negotiations.
Sure, so, hold on a second.
Yep.
Hold on.
Over to Charles.
I got your request.
Okay.
So, here's what I wanna do with the permission of this board. On our agenda today is the county canvas. I wanna put that on pause for just a moment here because the agenda item number nine, which is approving a lease between Jerry's Auto Sales and 4-H Grounds, I think that'll just take us two minutes here. I'd like to take that out of order, and I'd like to get that done first. Then, what I think I'd like to do is get all of these executive sessions out of the way and then come back in here afterwards and do the county canvas. Is there any problem with that?
So, the reason why I put it on the schedule like this, cause normally we do do the county canvas last, is cause we can get through the county canvas and then the people that are watching that want to see the canvas can see the canvas in action, and then you can go to your executive sessions not knowing how long it's gonna take.
Okay, good point. So, let's do agenda item number- Okay, good point. So let's do agenda item number nine. Then let's do the county canvas, and then let's do the executive session.
I'll withdraw my request at this time.
Okay, thank you. So.
Mr. Chair, I would move for approval for the leasing of the Four-H Grounds to Jerry's Automotive.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Okay, we will proceed with the county canvas.
Okay, so for the administrative rules for canvassing the results, the duties of the official board of the canvases for local jurisdiction, the duties of the official board for canvases of local jurisdictions are as follows. Open the returns from each precinct which are found in each poll book. Satisfy itself with the returns are genuine and not forged. Tabulate the returns from the precincts and the certification of provisional ballot count. Declare the results and make an abstract of the results of the votes cast for each of the candidates and each of the issues. The abstract must be signed and certified by the canvassers under the seal of the business manager or finance officer for the local jurisdiction. Uh, Lincoln County has forty, forty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-one active registered voters. The primary election had a voter turnout of twenty-nine point ninety-one of active voters. Total ballots cast were twelve thousand seven hundred and thirty-one. I'll wait until everybody comes back, I guess, to give them the instructions on what we're going to do. So we're going to go precinct by precinct. I'm going to go through and read all of the total results. The totals that I read will not be the total ballots cast due to undervotes and overvotes, Republican and non-political. Please compare your poll books totals to ballots cast. Discrepancies will be noted on the back of the recap. Take the county canvas and compare the election night results. Please compare every precinct with your canvas to the official county canvas. Kayla will show you which, what I'm referring to there as far as comparing the precinct you canvassed to the official county canvas. While you guys are going through that, I'm just going to go ahead and read the total votes that were cast in each race. Unless you have any questions. United States Senator John Thune had five thousand nine hundred and seven votes. Bruce Whalen had one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven. Mark Maury had five hundred and fifteen. United States Representative Dusty Johnson had four thousand nine hundred and twenty-three votes. Tappy Howard had three thousand one hundred and seventeen. Governor Steve Hargard had two thousand eighteen. Kristi Noem had five thousand nine hundred and seventy-four. State Senator District sixteen, Jim Bowlen had one thousand forty-one. Nancy Rasmussen had five hundred and sixty-four. State Representative District twelve, Greg Jamison had five hundred and sixty-two. Amber Arland had five hundred and eighty-seven. Carrie, how do I say the last name? Lonon Slager, I hope, I'm sorry, had four hundred and sixty-three. Gary Schuster had two hundred and fifty-one. Cole Heisey had three hundred and forty-seven. State Representative District thirteen, Sue Peterson had one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight. Tony Van Huesen had one thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven. Penny Baybridge had four hundred and nineteen. Richard Thomason had nine hundred and fourteen. State Representative District sixteen, Kevin Jensen, eight hundred and ninety. Carla Lems, one thousand forty-eight. Richard Vaskard, five hundred and ninety-nine. County Auditor Sherri Lund had three thousand five hundred and thirty-three. Jessica Palma had two thousand six hundred and eight. County Commission District one, Joel Aaron's had seven hundred and thirty-five. Wendy Hagan had four hundred, or Wendy Hogan had four hundred and eighty. Alex Hickson had five hundred and seventy-six. Tiffany Landine had five hundred and ninety-three. County Commissioner five, Jim Schmidt had nine hundred and ninety-four. Mike Mathis had six hundred and sixty-eight. Delegates to the state convention, Gary Schuster had two thousand five hundred and forty-four. Jay Lems had nineteen hundred and thirty-seven. Trish Murphy had nineteen sixty-one. Sarah Stever had two thousand four hundred and seventy-two. Noah Graeble had one thousand five hundred and twenty-six. Gary Gross, he had five hundred and forty-six. Precinct Committee Man, Norway Fairview, David Anderson, forty-seven. Scott Montgomery, fifty-one. Precinct Committee Man T, Isaac Lateral had one seventy. Nathan Block had one fifty-two. Precinct, Precinct Committee Man Sioux Falls, one eleven. James Burnett had one eighty-five. Manford Still had one ninety-seven. Precinct Committee Man Sioux Falls, one twelve. Arch Bill had two eighteen. John Livermont had forty-seven. Or, I'm sorry, Donald Livermont. Precinct Committee Man Sioux Falls, one fifteen. Donald Rolster had forty. Dennis Bosma had fifty-seven. Precinct Committee Man Sioux Falls, one eighteen. Chad Bishop had fifty-nine. Trenton Lee Arlent had ninety-five. Thomas Van Wald had forty-three. Precinct Committee Woman Norway Fairview, Linda Montgomery, fifty-nine. Karen Anderson, thirty-nine. Precinct Committee Man Sioux Falls, one eleven. Sarah Barnett, one nineteen. Barbara Still, one fifty-eight. Haley Halverson, sixty. Precinct Committee Woman Sioux Falls, one twelve. Amy Harms had one sixty. Teresa Livermont, forty. Precinct Committee Sioux Falls, one eighteen. Dana Jackson had thirty-four. Amber Brooke Arland had one fifty-seven. Kim Bishop had thirty-nine. Precinct Committee Sioux Falls, two eleven. Don Burris had ninety-one. Sarah Van Huesen had two eighty-four. Geraldine Keller had one sixty-six. Precinct Committee Man Sioux Falls, two eleven. Tony Van Huesen had four thirty-eight. Rex Keller had one seventy-five. Precinct Committee Man Sioux Falls, two fifteen. Bradley Jankard had eighty-two. Joel Aaron's had one eighty-eight. Precinct Committee Man Sioux Falls, two sixteen. Alyssa Lee Hayenga, twenty-five. Adam Brown, seventy-nine. David Hunhoff, one oh-one. Precinct Committee Man Sioux Falls, two fifteen. Susan Peterson, one sixty-eight. Genevieve Westerman, seventy. Precinct Committee Woman Sioux Falls, two sixteen. Renee Wolfgang, eighty-four. Sarah Rayburn, one oh-three. Constitutional Amendment C, yes votes, four thousand two hundred and fifty-eight. No votes, eight thousand two hundred and fifty-six.
We should, we should.
Okay.
Kayla. So they were one shirt? Well, so we come up with a shirt that could be the kind of thing that they need. So they're not going to. Yeah, that's me. Yeah, yeah, that's typically what they're, what we would think of being a one shirt. I mean, there would be no other reason. Yeah. Yeah, I think that the letter is good. I actually told Mr. This is your absentee.
There's a third envelope.
It's the same.
That's why you're.
I'm like, what is?
That's what I was missing. There was an envelope. Yeah, it wasn't a crate. It's just something I wasn't seeing. It was the other envelope. Thank you.
Yep.
Makes a lot more sense when you. Take your head out, Jones. Are we done? There you go.
Sign the county canvas as soon as you're all finished.
Here in a minute.
It's not my style. You know what? That's a big business now. Skins and wraps. Huge business.
I'm a little flued, so, okay. Sorry.
I don't wear everything. I was gonna say. If Sherry were to tell you, she'd tell you only sign it. Nope, you can go more, girl. Uh, just sign those for me. Would you send the next page due?
Who's signature here is that they can read?
But on top, it's mine. Who's this one? Is he a doctor? The second one.
I'm the second one.
Prescription.
Yeah, you don't want me writing your prescription. You may get something you didn't ask for.
I think that might be true.
Thank you. You guys are good to go.
Okay, thank you, Kayla. So just for the public's sake here, we just finished up the county canvas. I did get this question is, people have asked, what are you doing up here when we look through those books? And what I want to point the general public to is a statute passed by our legislature. It's SDCL 12-20-38. And it says the following. The Board of Canvassers for both primary and general elections shall at the time provided by 12-2036, proceed to open the returns from the various voting precincts in the county and make abstracts of the votes cast for each candidate's and each of the issues. Each of the abstracts of the votes made shall be signed and certified by the canvassers under the seal of the county auditor and deposited in the office of the auditor. So an abstract of the vote, just so people know, is we're looking at the numbers of people who voted in the precinct, making sure that matches up with each of the signatures. There's two different poll books that get signed by people. One poll book gets signed the day of, when you show up and vote in person. The other poll book is signed for those people who voted absentee. And so we make sure that the number of votes voted matches up with all those signatures. And you may have seen, I went back there and asked our auditor a question because in one of the precincts we had here, it showed that there was 122 people who voted, but there was only 121 ballots. Well, somebody went in, grabbed their ballot, and walked out with it, which they can do. They're free to do that. But anyway, we reconcile those issues, or excuse me, we don't reconcile those issues. The county canvassing board, which in this instance is the county commission, we prepare an abstract, and that just shows the number of people who voted, number of ballots cast. And so that's what you just saw all of us doing. So with that, I'm going to entertain a motion to go into executive session under subsections SDCL 1-25-2, sub 3, it appears. And if there's, well, I want to go into executive session under sub 1, 3, and 4.
Hold on just one second.
Oh.
Just to sign it?
Just to sign it? We already signed it. It's done.
I'll offer a motion to go into executive session under those statutes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Clerk, any discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes. We're in executive session. Got a motion in second. Hearing no discussion, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Also move.
Second.
Got a motion in second to adjourn. Hearing any discussion, hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes. We're adjourned. Thank you.